... the flag of the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting. The records show that all members of the City Council are present this evening with the exception of Councilman Partey. There's a copy of the Open Meetings Act posted on the west wall of the meeting room and is accessible to all members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is Item A: Approve Agenda as Submitted. Item B: Receive and Place on File All Notices Pertaining to This Meeting. Item C: Receive and Place on File All Materials Having Any Bearing on This Meeting. Item D: Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting on July 17, 2017, as on file in the City Clerk's Office. Item E: Approval of Minutes of Work Session Meeting on July 24, 2017, as on file in the City Clerk's Office. Item F: Approval of Treasurers' Report of Claims. F1: Approval of the Beatrice Humane Society Claim in the Amount of $1,000. F2: Approval of Balance of Treasurers' Report of Claims in the Amount of $478,937.21. Item G: Approval of Boswell Report of Claims in the Amount of $67,622.15. Item H: Approval of Pay Request Number 1 in the Amount of $95,445.14 to Lutman Carpenter Construction Company for the Second Street Reconstruction Project, Ella to Grant Street as Recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item I: Approval of Change Order Number 2 in the Amount of $24,813 and Change Order Number 3 in the Amount of $25,100 and the Pay Request Number 1 in the Amount of $138,579.35 to Masonary Construction, Inc. for the Municipal Auditorium Repairs, 2017. Item J: Approval of Special Designated License for the Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce for a Beer Garden in the Tabernacle at Chautauqua Park at Ninth and Grabell Streets on September 30, 2017 from 12:00 p.m. until 11:55 p.m. for the Oktoberfest Fundraiser. Item K: Resolution Number 6088 granting permission for the Beatrice Humane Society to hold a Doggie Dip Evening Fundraiser at the Big Blue Water Park on August 24, 2017. Item L: Resolution Number 6089 granting Main Street Beatrice and their designees permission to sell or offer for sale or pedal goods, wares, or merchandise on sidewalks and public right-of-way located on Court Street between Second Street and Tenth Street and Fifth Street between Market Street and Ella Street during the Total Eclipse Weekend on August 18, 2017 through August 21, 2017. Item M: Resolution Number 6090 approving the request from Main Street Beatrice to close Highway 136, which is also known as Court Street, from Fourth Street to Seventh Street on Thursday, October 26, 2017, between 4:00 p.m. and 7:45 p.m. for the Night of the Great Pumpkin Event. Item N: Resolution Number 6091 appointing Phil Ditrenner to the Beatrice Airport Authority. Item O: Resolution Number 6092 entering into a letter of agreement for professional services with Olson Associates to provide engineering services for the evaluation of the bio-salads drying process at the wastewater treatment facility as recommended by the Board of Public Works. And finally, Item P: Resolution Number 6093 granting permission to the City Administrator and his designees permission to sell or offer for sale or pedal goods, wares, or merchandise upon the public right-of-way, sidewalks, parking lots, parks, and sports fields throughout the city of Beatrice except for the property at 400 Ella Street, 200, I beg your pardon, 205 North Fourth Street, 201 North Fifth Street, 500 North Commerce Street, and upon city property located on sidewalks and public right-of-way located on Court Street between Second Street and Tenth Street and Fifth Street between Market Street and Ella Street on the dates of August 18, 2017 through August 21, 2017. Is there any item that a council member wants removed from the Consent Agenda? Phil?
K.
Item K. And Mr. Fairbanks?
Item P is in.
Item P. Anyone else want anything removed from the Consent Agenda? Anybody from the public? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I move that all the items listed under the Consent Agenda, with the exception of Items K and P, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that the items listed under the Consent Agenda be approved. Your vote, please.
Do you need to abstain?
I need to abstain on F1 for the last time.
Okay. So noted. Now your vote. That is approved 7-0. Mr. Catlin, let's go back to Item K.
Here I move that Resolution Number 6088 granting permission for the Beatrice Humane Society to hold a Doggie Dip Evening Fundraiser at the Beatrice Blue Water Park on August 24, 2017 be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that we further discuss Resolution Number 6088. Phil?
The only reason I pulled it off, I did see John Wright in the crowd, and this is a very dear, near thing to me, the Beatrice Humane Society's Doggie Dip. So I thought maybe he could get his first real plug into the public for this if he wanted to talk about it.
Come on up, John. If you'd state your name and address for the record, I'd appreciate
Yeah, my name is John Wrightma. I'm President of the Beatrice Humane Society. Need an address?
Please.
1901 South Fifth.
Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. This will be our fourth year to do this, and the other three years have gone without any glitches. We usually have around 80 dogs each year, and we advertised that please don't bring any aggressive dogs, and we have, everybody has honored that. We've had no scuffles, nothing even close to a problem. The dogs and the owners and the spectators really, really, really have a good time at this event, and it's just very much appreciated, and it also helps us raise a few dollars which we desperately need, so.
Any questions of John?
You might add, John, that you'll take any donations that anybody would want to give you.
Yes. That's correct. That's correct.
Plug, plug.
Yeah.
Any other questions of John? Phil, good? All right. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0.
Thank you very much.
You bet, John. Thank you. Next item is Item P.
Here I move that Resolution Number 6093 granting permission to the City Administrator and his designees permission to sell or offer for sale or pedal goods, wares, or merchandise upon the public right-of-way, sidewalks, parking lots, parks, and sports fields throughout the city of Beatrice except for the property at 400 Ella Street, 205 North Fourth Street, 201 North Fifth Street, 500 North Commerce Street, and upon the city property located on sidewalks and public right-of-way located on Court Street between Second Street and Tenth Street and Fifth Street between Market Street and Ella Street on the dates of August 18, 2017 through August 21, 2017 be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Your second?
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Fairbanks, that we further discuss Resolution Number 6090. Ted?
I don't have a problem with it. I had a couple of questions, and I thought it'd give Tobias an opportunity to clarify it for those people intending to do this. So hopefully you'll explain the drill, and hopefully we don't have any problem. But my question about it is, is how do you police it? So if Phil and I and Joe all have a stand set up and we're selling, each selling hamburgers, and I'm the one that came to you and got my permit, and I call the police department and say, "Joe didn't get his permit. Phil didn't get his permit," what happens? Police come down and shut these two guys down?
Correct. We will keep track at the City Hall who we give permission to to be on city property. We'll let the police department know who that list of individuals or businesses are. If you read through the resolution that we have before you tonight, it states that the city has the right to revoke a vendor's permission for any reason at any time without notice. So if for whatever reason you or somebody else is causing a problem, the police department has the right to go down there and just tell you, "You're done. Pack up your stuff, and you need to leave town."
Okay. I read it. I knew it. I just thought maybe you'd share it with everyone else.
Not a problem.
That's all I had.
Any other questions from the council, from the public? Write your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to receive the semi-annual report of the Citizens' Advisory Review Committee as provided by the Local Option Municipal Economic Development Act, RRS 1943. Mr. Grant Jones?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for taking this semi-annual report.
Grant, why don't you move that microphone this way, please?
Back?
I think...
You don't want to hear me louder?
No. He over-modulates. Doug hates over-modulation.
We good, Doug?
Thanks, Grant.
Well, as you have in your report tonight...
Bring it back just a little more, please.
I usually get called for being too soft, so this is unusual.
You're doing good. All right. Take off.
Check.
He doesn't say this to very many...
Check one. Check two. Awkward. All right. Well, we have in the LV840 funds at this moment a little over $761,000 available. Some of that is already earmarked for projects. The CDVG funds are reflected in about $166,000 and some odd change. I don't believe that the Dempster repayment has been plugged back into this yet. It has? That is a part...
I think so.
Okay. So that would be recent here in the last month, as you know. I did not see it on your agenda, but we did have two applicants at our last meeting. One was a reapply from Excel to do the housing project at the old hospital, and so that motion was presented, and it was passed unanimously by CARC to send forward to City Council for a vote. And then we had a second applicant come in, a local couple, business owners are applying for $72,000, some odd change, to purchase another local business here in the community. And the committee reviewed their application, which was very good, and the financials were strong, provided us performas, and we voted on that one unanimously as well to send forward to City Council. So the next time it's on your agenda, you will have that before you. And that is the most recent development we've had, short of, you know, outstanding loan payments.
Okay. Questions? Anyone from the public? Great job, Grant.
Sorry.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda...
Motion to close?
I beg your pardon.
Here I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:12 p.m.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaugh, that the hearing, public hearing be closed at...
7:12.
7:12 p.m. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Next item is a public hearing for the purpose of amending Table 4-2 and Table 9-1 of the zoning ordinance, Ordinance Number 94-13 relating to daycare facilities and parking facilities. I'll let you take that one. Tobias?
Yeah, if you saw in your packet essentially what happened back in 2012, we started to modify these two tables. It worked fine. 2014, we went time to go re-modify them again. When drafting the ordinance, we pulled an old copy of Table 4-2, and so the stuff you put in 2012 was taken out in 2014 when it should not have been. And that happened again, I think, in 2016 as we moved forward. And so what you have before you tonight is revising those two tables to include all the things that you meant to include. It actually did pass to include at one point or another since 2012. So it's daycare is the big one, and some parking facilities, those had been put in at one point and then taken back out due to just old versions of the table being used in prior ordinances.
Clear up some mistakes previous...
All it is, clearing up a few mistakes that have been made. Yes, sir.
What's the difference between daycare 1, daycare 2, and daycare center?
Has to do with the number of kids that you have, and we tried to align those more closely to what the state's regulations are.
Okay. Any other questions from the public? Mr. Catlin?
Here I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:13 p.m.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that the public hearing be closed at 7:13 p.m. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Next item is Resolution. Resolution Number 6094 establishing the final allocation for levy authority for property taxes for the Airport Authority for fiscal year ending September 30, 2018.
Here I move that Resolution Number 6094 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that Resolution Number 6094 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion from the council? We have members of the Airport Authority here if you're interested to hearing anything. All right. Seeing none. Anybody from the public that wanted to say anything? All right. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution Number 6094 has been passed and adopted. Next item is Ordinance. Ordinance Amending Table 4-2 and Table 9-1 and the Zoning Ordinance, Ordinance Number 94-13 relating to daycare facilities and parking facilities.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given Number 17-015. The title therefore be approved, and said ordinance be read by the title only the first time tonight.
Second.
Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given Number 17-015, titled thereof approved, and the ordinance be read by title only the first time tonight. Any further discussion?
Anybody ask the reason why I read it one time tonight? Planning and zoning needs to take action on it. They have their public hearing. They'll take action on it at their next council or their next planning and zoning meeting, which is the 15th. So you guys can take action on it one time tonight, come back to the next meeting, and pass it. So that's the reason.
Ordinance Number 17-015 by title the first time tonight. Your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Next is an ordinance vacating lots 45, 46, 47, and 48, South Beatrice in addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage, County Nebraska.
Here I move that said ordinance be given Number 17-016. The title therefore be approved. The rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance be given Number 17-016, title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 17-016 by number only the first time. Ordinance Number 17-016 by number the second time, and Ordinance Number 17-016 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that Ordinance Number 17-016 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that Ordinance Number 17-016 be passed and approved. Discussion.
If you look on page 78 of your packet, you see a map of the area that we're talking about. So the first thing you have here is a vacation of those four lots. The next thing you have is the Vitash addition, which is coming up shortly. This is down by TY Tobacco, if anybody wants to kind of know where we're talking about. But Mr. Vitash is looking to purchase three of those lots, come back in and build. He's looking at some type of RV storage is what he's looking at on those three lots. In order to build that type of building, he needs to replat those lots so that it fits onto those, that area. So the first step is a vacation, and the next step is approving the plat.
Questions? Anyone from the public? And your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 17-016 has been approved. Next item is an ordinance approving the plat of the Vitash addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage, County, Nebraska.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given Number 17-017. The title therefore be approved. The rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the ordinance be given 17, Number 17-017, title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 17-017 by number the first time. Ordinance Number 17-017 by number the second time, and Ordinance Number 17-017 the third and final time.
Here I move that Ordinance Number 17-017 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that Ordinance Number 17-017 be passed and approved. Any further discussion from anyone in the public? And your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 17, Ordinance Number 17-017 has been approved. Next item is an ordinance approving the plat of the Jansen First Edition to the city of Beatrice, Gage, County, Nebraska.
Here I move that said ordinance be given Number 17-018. The title therefore be approved. The rules be suspended. Said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given Number 17-018. The title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Again, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 17-018 by number the first time. Ordinance Number 17-018 by number the second time, and Ordinance Number 17-018 the third and final time.
Here I move this. Ordinance Number 17-018 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaugh, that Ordinance Number 17-018 be passed and approved. Any discussion?
If you look on page 82 of your packet, you see a map. We're talking to the area about 19th and Scott Street. Leroy Jansen owns a house there. It's kind of an L-shaped lot. He wishes to break those up and sell them into two lots. He can't use Administrative Subdivision because it was never platted in the first place. So that option was not available to him. The only way to break those two lots up was to plat it, and so that's why you see the plat going through tonight, and he will forever be known as the Jansen First Edition.
Just on the map, they're not putting a sign up there.
Any questions from the public? All right. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Next item on the agenda is Public Forum. Purpose of the Public Forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the City Council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the City Council at this time. We do have a couple of gentlemen that are going to make a presentation regarding the eclipse and some of the structure that has been put into place to try to make this as a smooth and easy operation. If you gentlemen would introduce yourselves.
Brian Daiki, Fire Chief, City of Beatrice.
Bruce Lang, Chief of Police.
Okay. We've, we've been pre-planning this for about 18 years, it seems like. It's probably been closer to 16 months. This has been one of the, probably one of the most difficult things, I think, we've ever had to plan for because we just don't know what we don't know. You know, are we going to get 60,000 people into the area, 200,000? You know, it's, it's just hard telling. Are we going to get five people? Yeah, I doubt that. So basically, what we have done is we've over-prepared because it's easier to stand down than it is to ramp things up, trying to get people in off-duty and so forth. I listened to a conference call last Friday from, with NEAM, Nebraska Emergency Management Association. Governors' offices expecting anywhere from 100,000 to 500,000 people coming into the state. You know, I've heard upwards of 60,000 in our area coming in, but, you know, there again, it's hard telling. Probably what we see our biggest challenge is, is traffic gridlock. You know, it'd be kind of like going to Branson, you know, a small town, all of a sudden got a huge population, and we're not set up for that. Also, we're hoping people are prepared that cell phones might not be working like they used to, and we might be oversaturated. And part of the reason why we're kind of thinking that is we thought back to the 2015 floods, how we had problems with cell phones and getting out along those. And we've, we've done a little bit of work on our end with Homeland Security where we've got priority call options that we do have. And, you know, and with the population increase, we're also thinking we're going to experience additional calls for service just because, you know, we double triple whatever our size of population, of course. You know, the amount of calls are likely to go up. And between that and the possible traffic gridlock on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, my department, we're going to be operating out of a couple of different locations. Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, we'll be out at the service center of the fire station. And then on Monday, we'll also have a medic unit out at Southeast Community College. And we've kind of broken up our response area into different geographical locations with that. We're hiring in extra off-duty personnel. Dispatch and police departments doing that as well. And for the, with all the activities that are going on the area, we're setting up a command post in the conference room next to the dispatch center on that Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. And it's got varying hours when we're going to be in place in there, too. With that, we'll have an instant action plan in place to try to keep things going a little bit smoother. Some of the other things that we've done, the City Hall's produced a map of the different site locations in town and dry camping. And then we've also developed a, basically a little card sheet of the different hospitals that we might transport at. And if we, you know, end up transporting somebody who's obviously not from around here at all, you know, we'll mark it on, on that sheet and say, "Hey, we're taking your loved one to this location." So we've also met with the Mutual Aid, some of the local, Gage County, part of the Mutual Aid Association, basically telling them that self-sufficiency is the key this weekend. You know, there's no guarantee any of us are going to be able to help each other out depending upon what's going on. And we also have a Mutual Aid meeting Wednesday night, and I'll, I'll address them there as well with that. So I'd say that, anything you need to add, Bruce?
No. One of the concerns has been, or questions came up about Highway 4 and, and 136. That could be a bottleneck. We have the ability to, or will have the ability to manually operate that traffic light as well as have, will have somebody stationed there during the busy times. Like Brian said, we've got extra staff on, on hand, and, you know, we're, for the most part, kind of just having lots of people available to handle whatever comes our way. But more importantly, we really want to focus on making a good image and presentation to the people that come here. So it's, it's more, in my view, it's equally as important, I guess I should say, that our people that are working are looking to assist people if they need to know where to go camp, or they need to know where's a good place to park, or if they park in the wrong spot. You know, hopefully we'll be courteous and ask them, you know, "Hey, this isn't not a good spot, but here's some other places you can park." And so we, we think it's really important for our first responders to serve kind of a dual role here, to not only be there if people need help or there's a problem, but also to present a good face for the city. So we think we're ready, but like Brian said, that would, and for us to truly be ready, we'd have to know what we're ready for, and we're not really sure what that is because we don't know what our numbers are.
Any questions, the gentlemen? I know that they've been enthralled in the planning processes for some time now, and I think they're trying to over-prepare again, like they said. But as soon as that, we think we've got all the bases covered, we're going to miss one of them. So, but I appreciate all your efforts.
Well, and I guess I would say one thing. You know, we have the law enforcement, or no, Local Emergency Operations Plan, not law enforcement, Local Emergency Operations Plan that we've had in place since the 90s. And the county, along with us, worked really hard to keep that as a current living document. And, you know, that will be what drives the train as far as who does what and when we're operating. And what that does is, A, says that the fire chief is the guy that runs, the center runs the operation, and then the rest of us are in there, but you have to have somebody to run the thing. And that works, has been used before, and it works well. So I think we'd be remiss to not mention that that document that you all have access to, you know, is something, we're going to pull that out, and we're going to follow it.
Very good. Rich?
Did you guys bring Gus in on this, too?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Tons of people. Yeah. We've, we have various types of meetings. The security meetings are with the chamber that has kind of led that charge. The subcommittee that Gus chairs as far as, they have a much more complicated role as far as, because they're, have these rural areas that are very hard to police. So they're going to, you know, their roles are a little bit different. their roles are a little bit different. But yeah, they're intricately involved in all of this, absolutely.
First, the only question I have, and I, you know, I so applaud your comments that you guys are essentially, you know, your officers are essentially our ambassadors.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent, and I don't mean to micromanage, but I do ask, my question is, is how are you guys gonna be dressed? I mean, I've been so, I've been in restaurants here or out in the public and seen officers, not necessarily just from your department, but other departments, come in in military combat gear, and you know, you...
These'll be regular uniform, standard uniformed officers.
Okay, 'cause there's nothing more unnerving to think than being invaded.
Yeah, and yeah, and I kind of know where you're going with that, emergency response team type...
You and I've had this conversation.
Your emergency response team type of uniforms wouldn't be appropriate for this unless, of course, we had to activate that unit. But aside from that, yeah, it'll be standard police uniforms. Now, having said it, we might also have bike uniform guys, so.
I just, I just don't like to see your guys in tactical gear. I think it's unnecessary, so. That's all I had.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public has any questions of these gentlemen? All right, thank you very much. Thanks for the update.
Good job, guys.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Next item is under discussion and reports, the approval of a special designated license for Main Street Beatrice for the Magic of Main Street fundraiser on November tenth, two thousand seventeen, from five PM to twelve AM at the Beatrice City Auditorium, two oh five North Fourth Street, Beatrice, Nebraska.
Mayor, I move that's a special designated license for Main Street Beatrice for the Magic of Main Street fundraiser on November tenth, two thousand seventeen, from five PM to twelve AM at the Beatrice City Auditorium, two oh five North Fourth Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Be recommended to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for approval.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that the special designated license for Main Street Beatrice be referred to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for approval. Discussion?
We didn't put this on like a synergy, we figured somebody might want to talk about a little different application we found in the past, largely just because it's the city auditorium. I know one of the issues we had in there obviously was the floor. How do you work on making sure the floor stays protected? I know Michael's worked with Mark Pethod, and they've resolved that issue, and so that's been taken care of. The issue now, just before you, is the, whether or not to designate a liquor license for the city auditorium for this event or not. I tell you, staff-wise, we did not have any concerns with it.
Bob?
I just wondered why the change?
Yeah, I defer to Michael on that one as to why the change.
Okay, thank you.
Just for the record, Michael.
Yep, Michael Sodan, Main Street Beatrice, two oh five North Fourth Street for offices there. But yes, as far as the reason for some of the change, the committee was just wanting to, to see some changes with the event. We've long-standingly had this event at the Kensington, they've been a wonderful host, and the committee's just wanting to try to consider someplace that's a little bit different. Logistically, it is nice for us just because our staging area is in the city auditorium, and so that helps reduce a little bit there. And it is just a really neat building, I know you guys just got done doing a lot to it, and are still kind of finishing up some stuff to really, you know, make it a gem here in the community again, and it's just kind of one of those nice places to try to showcase from time to time, so.
Anyone else? Rich?
Mr. Partey is in Arkansas, but I talked to him about an hour and a half, two hours ago, and he said that according to him, his vote won't count because he's not here, but he wanted to let people know that this is on public property and he would vote against it. I'm gonna vote for it, but just to let you know.
Thank you, Rich.
Any other comments from anyone? Phil?
Michael, I really appreciate that you are going down to the city auditorium after we spent all this money, put all the work and time in it, people have not really seen this building unless you went to Mudekis for basketball games and things, so a lot of people would be surprised and pretty much in awe what it looks like now, it looks back to what it used to look like. So I'm really glad you're gonna try to use the building for something besides basketball.
I agree, Phil, it's really a highly under-utilized building.
Because you aren't gonna be done by then?
Don't know. Rick?
Do you intend to use all of the floor space there?
Yeah, so, so right now, the plans are still kind of in progress. Obviously, this is in the middle of November, so we're just trying to be ahead of the game. So we're not, we don't have final plans done right now, this is kind of first step, just to make sure this date worked for the city and to go ahead and just get the liquor permit rolling, just that way it doesn't get overlooked. But right now, what we're discussing is that we would utilize a little bit of the stage area, just more for, probably for our announcer like Denny Hendrix, who's gonna be doing some of the auctioneering, he'll probably be up there, and we'll have some different settings and stuff like that, but primarily using the gym floor. We have been working with a couple different sources to make sure we can get that covered and that it's fully protected, that way there's no one that's gonna scratch a chair on the floor, do, you know, spill something on it. It'll be completely covered, that way there's, you know, it's protected, so we've been working on that. We're not anticipating using any of the seats, of course, the restroom areas, the front lobby, the concession stand, that's what we're looking at using, so primarily staying in the auditorium area itself, but that's, that's kind of the plan right now. We're hoping that people aren't just wandering all around. We'll certainly talk with the fire department to make sure they've got their gates secured that way they don't have someone wandering down there if that's an issue, but...
Well, this is your main fundraiser for the year, and so we encourage people to participate.
It is, it's definitely the biggest one.
All right, anything else from anyone? Anybody from the public? All right, thank you very much, Michael.
Thank you, everyone.
Gentlemen, your vote please. That is approved seven zero. Next is the Engage Quarterly Report, and Mr. Walker Zolkowski is with us. Walker?
Thank you. Hello. Can you hear me, Doug? All right, thanks for having me. Q two was pretty big for Engage, actually all of us, it was a lot of stuff rocking and rolling. We already talked a little bit about the Excel, I think Grant talked about that tonight. That was one of the big wins we had, we got the NIFA housing tax credits to tear down an old hospital and put up some new houses, so a big win. That was, we got the funding in the round, in the second round, and we were the only project, I think out of like thirty projects that got funded, so turned a lot of heads with that one. That's a big deal for us. We're kind of focusing on some new marketing stuff, you know, obviously, we want to recruit companies and businesses, but one of the things that we've kind of learned with us, what we're doing is recruiting and retaining talent in the folks that live and work here and, or maybe work here but don't live here. So we're just taking kind of a whole kind of marketing campaign, so hired a photographer and a drone kind of slash video production company and a graphic artist, and we're just working on brochures and videos and photographs and things to get down to the public, and so people can start off a meeting by showing a video of, you know, where they live and where they work. And we actually have a photo shoot tomorrow, kind of staging some different photos all over town, some housing stuff, and some kids at the skate park, and some coffee, young professionals doing, having coffee and stuff like that. So you probably saw the drones above Homestead Days, and above the fair, and above the golf tournament, and that was all us, kind of just capturing everything we can about the community. They'll also be down here for the eclipse too, so just kind of document all those folks that'll be in town and trying to, you know, capture that so we remember for a long time. We had two pretty big groundbreakings, or I guess ribbon cuttings in quarter two. The governor came down for the one at Duonex, where they officially kind of got up and going, so the governor's down for that. And then also, I think it was the next week, he was down for the World Lawn celebration too, for them officially kind of being in their new business, and that was nice to have him down here twice for those things. He also came down for the parade, and then we were over at E. Energy Adams too, when he was doing his tour around the, around the state. So all those kind of gave us some press, but then we were at the second annual Governor's Summit, and several folks kind of made jokes to me, and I thought they were good jokes, but they said they should have called it Beatrice Economic Development Summit, because we really were on the mic probably ten times. I mean, the governor talked about World Lawn, and he talked about his visits with, you know, E. Energy and with Duonex and World Lawn, and a lot of it was focused on international trade, and I think what we're doing, kind of, you know, building those relationships on an international front has, has kind of put us at the top of the table for, or top of the chart for, on the state, on international stuff, and we'll be actually going to Japan as well here in a month or two, because Duonex is half-owned by a Japanese company, so we'll just do the same thing we did with World Lawn, was go over there and appreciate their investment and tell them thank you, and we'll do that with Duonex too. So maybe it'll lead to even more greater investment from those guys, so. Hosted, you know, we're always hosting folks in town, you know, all of our key partners, we hosted a CERN meeting, which is the Southeast Regional Nebraska Network, all right, yeah, which is big service providers in the southeastern part of the state. And then we've hosted the head of the Nebraska Business Development Center, the head of SEND, Southeast Nebraska Economic Development District, just showing them what we have going on and seeing if there's a way we can partner. And those meetings actually led to some good stuff that we've, that's come out of those. Some folks from the CERN meeting that we had down here called a week later and said, hey, the USDA called and they want us to submit a grant, we want to use Gage County to submit that grant. And so we submitted a hundred thousand dollar grant to USDA to do facilities, community facilities planning for every community in Gage County. We haven't heard back on that one yet. But then also some folks from the Heartland Leadership, that was Heartland Leadership, and then BS, or the Business, Nebraska Business Development Center Director was down here, and she called and said, hey, we got a last-minute request from the SBA, and we need to put an application in today, can we use Beatrice? And we actually got the application in and won that, and now we're going through the process of figuring out how we're gonna use that grant, but the Nebraska Business Development Center will bring their entire team down here for a week, and we'll work with, I think it's gonna be twelve businesses, on customized marketing. And it comes at a good time because we have, you know, a million irons in the fire with our hotel study, with our retail study, coming off the housing study, so we're trying to assess where are we going, you know, as a community, as a county, and so bringing these studies together, then having NBC come down and say, what the studies, what these showed, here's how your business can do better in, you know, marketing. So, you know, eventually we'll get to a point where the studies will, you know, we'll be able to get some things out of it, so. But I think it's good that, you know, some of our key partners around the state call us, you know, they call on Beatrice when they need to get something done, and, you know, it's led to some, some more things, so. One of the, I think, you know, the business we've been working with was Hills Home Furnishings, we think we're gonna get that business transitioned here, which is great, you know, another, to keep a business local. And a couple other, gosh, man, we've had a couple other press releases we sent out here a week or two ago, one was for Whispering Winds Cottage, which is a memory care facility that's going out by B S D C, so we were kind of helping along with that. And then another, that same day, we sent out a press release too for, well, everyone knows about the Hendrix turkey hatchery. There is a producer just south of town by Odell, the Shales are gonna put up, you know, multi-million dollar facility that's gonna produce eggs for the hatchery here in town, so kind of helping with that too, so. We probably have more things to update you on, but I guess any questions, it was a busy quarter.
Questions?
Walker, F three. As I read through your report, I've got three questions. Where you have to build relationships with industry leaders, on ours it's highlighted here, but do we have a program, you talked about connecting more, hiring interns, businesses, is it geared towards the high school students or SCC students? And I guess the question is, is do we have a program that high school students can earn credit towards graduation by working through that, and do they have to go through you guys?
Was that a planted question? Because it was a great question.
No, I just wanted to hear that was a great question.
It really, truly was. So we were working with, it's a combination between the Department of Labor, the Department of Education, Department of Economic Development, and then our Manufacturing Council, and then the high school as well, and, you know, we, there's no, we want to get those kids out into the manufacturers and work here while they can in high school, and then hopefully that leads to a job down the road. But there's always this concerns about what they can and can't do, and so we worked with all these different organizations. We actually have this kind of whole matrix put together now, and it tells the manufacturer, here's what you, your kids can and can't do, and then the school system has this whole school-to-work thing set up where there's time in their day where now they can get high school credit and then go out and work in a job and get paid to work in that job too. So, you know, it helps them towards their graduation, but then gives them some experience so that when they graduate, they would kind of already be qualified for that job.
Okay. So, down here, lower inventory assets and site development? I know you've talked to us about that before, and I think it's an excellent idea that we're not waiting until everything in the industrial park's completely full and then go, oh, now what do we do? But, but how are we, are you trying to focus in this, one is, how are we doing on that? Two, are you focusing in property adjacent, or are you looking for something north, southeast, west? Where we at?
Both, so looking all around the county, because we need a place to put big stinky industry, and so, but it's close to, you know, all the infrastructure they need, because they want roads, they want power, water discharge, all that stuff we have to consider. So I actually presented to Black Hills Energy the other day, because they're out all around the county, all over, and kind of tasked them with, you know, identify some sites that you think would be good to drag some natural gas to. So they're kind of, you know, working on some of that, but, you know, if we see some good ground, we want to inquire about it and talk about potentially getting an option, so. I've got conversations going with people kind of, well, in the town, but then around the county. We haven't gotten close yet, but we're working on it. But then, you know, we still have sixty-five, what, sixty-five acres out in the industrial park that we're trying to push to, and so we're capturing some better images of that, so with our drones, we're out there, so we can sell it better. We don't have anything yet, basically in short, but we're working still.
Well, that, I guess that was my, that was part of my question, was the big stinky industries. I mean, everybody wants industry, everybody wants development, until it gets to be not in my backyard. And, and so that was, that was kind of where I was at with that question, and I appreciate. So, okay, last thing is, on the very last part, the working with city county leaders, the partner with the site location partnership at the major industry trade shows, when you're talking about the major industries, I mean, do you focus on, I mean, so years ago, they were trying to focus on injection molding, that's kind of how we ended up with Akuma. Is there something that, that you're trying to focus on that, that the state's trying to help us with, or that you're saying that fits us regionally?
Our main focus really is complementary industries, and so anybody that is maybe a customer or a supplier to somebody that's here is our main focus. But with the site location partnership, they walk trade shows for us. I wouldn't say maybe all those trade shows fit what we're going after, but the whole other component to that is they have private events with site selection consultants prior to each industry trade show, and those are invite-only, and so by being a member of their group, we get to go to those, so it's one-on-one with site consultants, and then if projects do come our way, there's a pretty good chance that we would have met with, you know, that site consultant, because if we go to all those events, we have run into them. So it's, that's probably more of our focus. But then even that's changed a little bit lately, because the part, the group that we're a part of, the Lincoln Partnership for Economic Development, decided to join, our whole regional group is going to join it, so that's actually gonna free up a lot of money in our budget, because we'll still get access to it, and we don't have to pay for it.
Well, appreciate the explanation and, and the comment that, oh, things have changed. I really appreciate that, because, oh, things have changed, and it's an ongoing, always developing, always changing thing, and for a long time, I think it was, this is how we do it.
Yeah, and I think that's what, you know, as I've come on, it's been a little over a year now, and we're just, we're just trying to always look to the future of, are we going in the right direction? Are we doing everything right? Are we going after who we need to, and, yeah, it's never gonna stop.
Okay. Stand, that's all I had.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I was gonna ask you a little bit more about the SBA grant, the twelve businesses, are, have you announced that? Is that, did I miss that, or what?
No, that's a good point, we haven't put out an announcement yet. We just had a conference call on it the other day, and we have some follow-up notes that we're trying to go through. We've made a decision, I think we're gonna focus on like six retail businesses, and six small manufacturers, that, and then we'll have an application period, so we'll invite everyone to apply here pretty soon, and then we'll go through applications and choose, you know, six and six.
And so what will that cost the businesses?
Nothing, it's free, it's hundred percent free for the business, and all they have to do is just, they'll go into a confidentiality agreement with NBC, because they'll have to turn over all their financials, you know, so NBC can say, here's where you are and where you could be, but here's how you get there. So we won't probably be part of some of those meetings, just to keep it in total custody. So we won't probably be part of some of those meetings, just to keep it in total custody.
Hope you have a lot of people apply.
Me too. So if you know anyone, encourage them to apply, I mean, we'll be looking.
You might want to get it out on the news media so that they can promote it.
Yep.
Good comment, Rick. Anybody else? Anyone from the public? Walker, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
All right. Next item on the agenda is discussion regarding the downtown facade improvement program applications that have been received. Tobias? I'm sorry.
Mayor, I move that the projects recommended by the downtown revitalization committee proceed to the tier two environmental review process.
Second.
Catlin, seconded by Cur that the projects recommended by the downtown revitalization committee proceed to the tier two environmental review process. Tobias?
So in your packet, you see a memo kind of where the committee's at, and just give some background of where this, remember, we did the downtown revitalization phase one grant? We came in, we did the study, we had the study done this time by Hannah Kealan. Once that study was completed, we applied for the phase two grant application. Last time we got the phase two grant application, we redid Fifth Street between Court and Ella. This time, we looked to do something a little different, and we did a facade improvement program. And so we went out, we drafted all of the guidelines for that program, we sent it out, gave businesses an opportunity to apply. We ended up with twenty seven applications requesting somewhere about seven hundred and sixty four thousand dollars. And you may ask, how do you not know the exact number? Some of them issued different scopes, depending on whether or not they got money or didn't get money, and so it kind of varied from, you know, a little bit of exactly how much they're asking for. The phase two grant that we were awarded is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars of that goes to the administrative cost that the city incurs. So reimbursing for my time doing all the environmental review, everything like that. When you do this grant, you have a couple of things you have to do. First, you have a phase one environmental review that you have to go through. Now, it's called environmental review, but includes a lot of things. So we did the phase one, you did on the whole downtown area. Now, once we pick particular projects, we have to do a tier two review. So if we pick a building at 123 Main Street, now we have to do an environmental review on that building to make sure that it meets all the requirements that DED and HUD and everybody else out there has, so they can get federal dollars. Some of those tier two environmental review process includes, are there underground storage tanks? That's fairly easy, we can answer that one pretty quickly. The biggest one is State Historical Preservation Office. SHPO is part of the environmental review. They need to approve the work that's going to be done on these buildings. So that will take us a little bit longer to do. Michael has already laid a lot of the groundwork with a lot of these applicants, so hopefully we can make that process go a little faster. But that's one thing we have to work through on all of these applications going forward. So that being said, the committee met a number of times, reviewed the applications, went out, got additional information if they needed it, came back through, kind of discussed it, tried weeding some things out, because obviously you had a lot more ask than you had money available to you, trying to find a way, how do you pare this thing down to a number that's manageable? And so what you see before you are seventeen applications, three hundred and forty thousand dollars worth that the review committee is recommending move forward to that tier two environmental review process. Now, we'll go through that process, that process will probably take us about forty five days. The reason it takes that long is, again, I have to send that letter to the state fire marshal asking if there's any underground storage tanks at 123 Main Street. I already know there's not any, because they have a list of them on their website, but they have thirty days to answer me back and say, no, there are no underground storage tanks at that location. So that just kills thirty days right there. So we're working through that process, so our recommendation is the seventeen that you see before you tonight. Now, the next step is, after we go through that environmental review process, there may be some applications that don't qualify. Either don't meet SHPO's requirements, have an underground storage tank, whatever else is going on, for some reason, DED says you can't give them money. Or it may be that they look at it and say, that's great, I didn't realize all the other federal strings that come with federal dollars. It's not worth it for me to do this project, I'm going to walk away from it and go someplace else. The biggest one is Davis Bacon. Since these are all federal dollars, they all have to meet Davis Bacon requirements, because every one of them's over two thousand dollars, which is the threshold for Davis Bacon. Which now means that your contractor has to be SAM registered, fairly easy to do, but they have to do it. But they have to go through, and we have to get a wage determination from the feds. They have to submit weekly payrolls, and I have to verify that all the people are being paid the right amounts, we have to do site visits, we have to do all these things. You may have some business owners, property owners that go, for my relatively small project, it's not worth it to go through this hassle. Thanks, but no thanks, I want to walk away from this. So that's how we came up with this list. The committee's here, so if you have questions about anything in particular, we can kind of walk through those. You probably should abstain.
From voting, but I can ask questions.
You can ask questions.
Even then, you can't, I would recommend that he doesn't, but.
I do have a question, though.
Yes.
So what's the, so what is your Plan B? So like you said, you have people that say, no, it's not worth it to me, you know, they've, we've had this money allocated for them, does it split equally among the other ones that you've done to give them more funds?
I think you have four options. You either go back out and have another application process.
Right.
You could simply take the ones that have already moved forward and got environmental clearance and say, we really like your project, here's an extra ten thousand dollars. Whether that's split evenly or not, to be determined. I think you could go out and simply just have, the poison pill in this thing always was, if there weren't enough applicants or something else, the city could be an applicant. You could see the city come in, be an applicant, and use that money towards the Carnegie Building or City Auditorium, something like that, this historic building, and use those funds towards something along those lines. Or you could pick one of the applications that didn't move forward originally, and look to go back and do the environmental review on that process and move it forward.
So the question that leads that into it, do you have time to, what is the most, do you have time to do it if you decide to open it back up? Do you have time to control the funds?
You're going to have to know fairly quickly.
Right.
You're going to have to have really people deciding here by November whether or not they're in or out.
Okay.
Just in order to get everything done. Otherwise, I'm going to come back to you and say, if it's March or April, I'm going to say, let's just push forward with this, you know, city auditorium or Carnegie Building, just because I don't have the time to get all the other stuff done.
Right. Well, and even if that's the case, those are public facilities and everyone in the community benefits from it.
And if these move all the way through, the work has to be completed by when?
It has to be completed by November first of next year.
Okay.
Because I've got to have time to get all the bills back in, make sure they're all paid, all the paperwork's taken care of, and submitted, so we're saying November one.
Okay. That's all my questions, thank you.
Rich?
Just a little confused, the recommended funding money that comes out of the reuse or the revitalization, that doesn't have to be paid back, does it?
No, though, so what's going to happen?
They have skin in the game, there is money of theirs in the game also.
Right, the grant requires, the grant requires they have a minimum of twenty five percent match. You'll see, nobody got funded at seventy five percent level, so everybody has more than twenty five percent match in the grants that we're proposing move forward. So when we give money to that applicant, they're going to have to sign a loan agreement with the city. And the reason you ask why you have to sign a loan agreement, the city has to guarantee that those improvements stay on the building for five years. The way that we've found other communities have done this, is that you assign, have the applicant sign a loan agreement with the city, that if for any reason those improvements go away, within that five year period, they have to repay the city, because we have to repay DED. If the improvements stay for five years, the loan's forgiven.
I like this.
Okay, any other questions?
As we move forward, you'll see those loan agreements come through for individual applicants, one at a time, as they come up, and then you'll have an opportunity to vote on those.
So is there an insurance requirement on these? I mean, because, let's say the building burns down, you, they had a building that was worth ten thousand bucks, we put another ten thousand, you know, the city funds in to ten thousand, the building's worth now forty because of the improvements, do they have to insure it at that higher rate to make sure that we get ours? Because, I mean, is there, is there an insurance clause in this, in case something happens?
There's not at this point, I'd have to talk to DED and see what their requirements would be if an act of God were to take down a building. Obviously, it wasn't something they go back and repaint over, they didn't tear down the corsets or anything like that.
Right. But there's fires occur, and fires occur.
Those buildings are insured for over a million dollars.
Just a question.
No, it's just liability.
But if I'm talking to other communities, they said that they were given, they were told, you don't have to worry about that, whether or not that holds or not.
Well, I think if Grant was still here, he'd tell you that you just need to worry about that.
Yeah, it was Greg and myself.
I'm just saying.
There's a couple of members of the committee that's worked hard on this, and I want to recognize them. Lorraine Riedesol is one, Michael Sothan, Carol Schuster, Paul Whaley, and am I missing anyone? Oh, and Tobias, yeah, he doesn't count. Thank you very much for your.
You had said worked hard on it, that's what I.
He just directs traffic, that's all he does.
They're the artistic guy, not me.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to move forward with the tier two environmental review. Your vote please. That is approved, six in favor and one abstention, one abstention, Mr. Claybaum. All right, thank you, everyone. Our next city council meeting is going to be on the Eclipse Day, August 21st, 2017, at seven o'clock. Then we'll have a work session on August the 28th. With that, Mr. Catlin, we're going to move to go into executive session.[1767.26]